We have to do that before the nesting season begins. So, construction on the actual pathway is anticipated to start in early June. So, we're currently working through submit all reviews with the contractor, and that should be moving forward in a couple of months here. Uh, let's see here, we're wrapping up a couple of sewer and water studies. One is a water optimization study that deals with operations of the water tower. And we're also wrapping up a study of the Jackson Road Pump Station and Force Main to try to determine what if any improvements are needed there in terms of wet well capacity at the station, and then inspection and repair, possible repair improvements to the Force Main itself. Um, Jan, I know you had also asked for a recap on the sanitary sewer contract review that we had given at the joint board meeting back in September. Um, currently, and just a quick recap, currently, the contract has about 2,200 REUs remaining in the Jackson Road District and about 1,100 REUs remaining in the Liberty Road District. Most of the time, Ann Arbor does not separate the two anymore. So, based on those, you have about 3,300 REUs. We'd have to confirm that, that they're not going to separate and hold you to that anymore, um, that separation, but, so 3,300 total. Mostly, Liberty has already been built out, which is why after a conversation with Ann Arbor, we likely could combine that with Jackson. But based on our projections in the next five years of growth, based on what site plans we know are in the queue right now, um, normal growth patterns and some of those 2,200 you'd actually reveal, you'll use about 1,500 to 1,800 of those, um, in the next five years. So, you've got somewhere between 500 and 750 left. Um, knowing that, if Ann Arbor allows us to combine Liberty, that number goes up substantially. But that is also predicated on your physical capacity at the pump station. So, depending on what our wet well study turns up, you may have to do improvements to the actual pump station before you can do, before you'll hit contract capacity. So, there's physical capacity and there's contract capacity, and it's a balancing act between the two. I'm happy to go over any questions you guys may have on that. I know that was super quick. But somewhere around the 5 to 750 mark is where we're estimating what you have left.
Yeah, Commissioner Moore, you had a question?
I was listening to you, Sally. You said this, there's 22,000 REUs remaining in the Jackson, where?
2,200 REUs in the Jackson Road District.
And then there was, how many in the Liberty District?
About 1,100.
And is that, um, right there by wedged in between PNC and, oh geez, the, um...
My sound, oh, okay, can you repeat that, please?
That station that's wedged between, right next to PNC, that bank, right at Jackson and Zee?
Yes.
Is that a, the Jackson Road Pumping Station?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And where is the Liberty Pumping Station?
It is on Liberty Road, down by Summerfield Blunt, and the, what used to be the title company there.
Oh, okay, right by where 94 crosses?
Uh, west of that. It's not very obvious, it's kind of just a small building with a hole in the ground, with a lid on it. It's disguised pretty well. It used to just be a can station, and in, let's see here, 2013, I believe, we upgraded it to have an above-ground buildings for easier access.
And you started out by saying that the Liberty Water Main is all installed and running. Where were, where was that work going on? Was that at Zeeb and Liberty?
No, that would be from Wagner and Liberty near Nye Funeral Home, west through the Sciouview Development to the eastern edge of the Polo Fields Golf Course. Phase two will take us through the Polo Fields, down Dornoch, and into the connection over near Eagle Drive. The water main, some of the water main is in the ground, not all of it, and it is not yet connected. That'll happen later this summer once we get the rest of the pipe installed and then get all our pressure testing and bacterial testing done.
And then with regard to the REUs, I think you said you anticipate, um, based on the 3,300 REUs, that you anticipate being able, that service would be fine with all of the remaining vacant lots that are on the system but have not been built on yet? Did I understand that? Did I hear you right?
No, so what we, of that 3,300, and I'm going to leave Liberty out of it because we would have to confirm with Ann Arbor for now. So, of the 2,200 that is left in your Jackson Road District, with developments like Woodview Commons, the rest of Trailwoods, the rest of Sciouview, a couple of the other ones that are smaller but, uh, in the queue. So, our original, our original estimate included like North Zeeb Commons, which has pretty much fallen through at this point. But based on those developments and the development trend that we've seen, so those are the largest ones that would use the most, you're projected to use about 1,500 to 1,800 of that 2,200 in the next five years.
Okay, and I guess, I think we answered this before, before you guys did this study because when you, you did a presentation to us after you did the study, this project that Liberty and Wagner, where an office building was going to be built, and they're seeking to change that to an apartment complex. I think you found, you determined that we would have enough REUs to be able to accommodate that. Is that right?
Yes, that would likely be a safe assumption. Obviously, we'd have to confirm that when plans are in. Unless, I mean, it's, you should bring...
And can you have the copy of that study that you did?
Yeah, I can send it to Jan, and she can distribute it. I know we've provided it to township, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Sally? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Doug, you're in the Europe Eps.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody. Um, so a few things, don't want to steal the thunder of the ZOA report, but we did have a meeting of the zoning ordinance amendment committee last week. Pretty productive meeting consisting Chris Chang, Kim Moore, and Jan. Jan's sort of our third member while, while we wait to point to third member. But typically, the zoning ordinance amendment committee is the group that kind of vets any new ordinance language that the planning commission will eventually be reviewing. And, uh, and then once it gets to a point that it's ready for the planning commission to review, it gets put in front of the planning commission for the full body to take a look at it. So, we, uh, we've had a zoning ordinance amendment committee for many years at the township, but, um, over the last few years, partly because we're updating the master plan and partly due to COVID concerns we hadn't met in quite some time. So, we went over some priorities, determined a few things that we could start working on right away. And the first, really, the first thing that we're going to tackle is amendments to the planned unit development ordinance. We already did some work on this over the last, oh, about a year ago or so. Those were never brought in front of the planning commission. So, we're going to bring those in front of the zoning ordinance amendment committee and kind of get going on the PUD changes. And those, you know, if acceptable to the ZOA, we'll move on to the planning commission. There are a number of other ordinances that we are also looking at. Perhaps, uh, those can be discussed in the ZOA section of the committee reports. But I just wanted to let you guys know that we are, we are starting to move, and hopefully, we'll, now that we're restarted, we'll keep our foot on the gas and keep moving in that front. Other items to report, I have been told, although I have not seen yet, that the Knights of Columbus property will be resubmitting some new information. I don't know what that new information is yet. They have not submitted anything. But they were asking Fran about a resubmital fee, and Fran was talking about it to me today when I was at the township. So, that tells me they are planning on resubmitting something in the near future. So, we will look for the Knights of Columbus project with new information to be submitted at some upcoming planning commission meeting. I can't tell you when because I don't know when that will be exactly. The Woodview project that the planning commission just recommended approval of at your last meeting, uh, they will be moving on to the township board. Not tomorrow night, but they will be on the township board, um, I believe, first meeting in May. And in the meantime, they're going to be, they're getting their plans ready to submit for the final PUD stage for, to the planning commission. So, that will be coming to the planning commission at some upcoming meeting. So, that's, they're, they're working on their final PUD plan submittal, and that will be coming as well. And just for the information of those that might be watching at home or, or, uh, planning commissioners who are interested, the Heritage PUD project on the west side of Baker is on the township board agenda tomorrow night. And I will be attending that meeting to try to answer questions that the township board might have about that project. And besides that, I've got nothing else for tonight.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Wong? All right. Share report. I, we had our environmental task force meet on the first Thursday evening of the month. So, we did have a meeting last week. And the committee, we're, we're still missing one working groups kind of report. When all of those are collected, I will put, give, distribute those to planning commission members so you can kind of see what the different working groups have been doing. They're putting together why this area is important to resilience or sustainability, climate change. What are some recommendations? What sort of data are we missing that we need to have? And some other recommendations to consider. And, um, what we're going to be doing now is going into a community engagement phase, and that will be working with our C's practical team. We have three, all of the team members are going to be working over the summer to continue to make progress. But we do have three of them who will be, well, I think maybe almost four of them may be splitting the internship stipends that we have. And they're going to be doing some more on-the-ground surveying, meeting with folks, trying to get community feedback on some of their goals and some of those holes, and also what's important and what kind of climate impacts of why breaking people in the township are, are seen. So, we're waiting for them to, in May, they're going to actually develop that plan, and there'll probably be a couple phases of community engagement, and the idea is to do it in multiple ways. So, stay tuned for that, that's pretty exciting. The county, um, they will have their first draft of the resilient washout plan. They're targeting July. So, that'll be a nice dovetail because there's some data that we're hoping that the county will be able to supply us, that we won't have to go out and kind of gather on our own or pay someone to, like a greenhouse gas inventory. So, between those two things, we're hoping, um, the end of the year, but no later than spring of next year, that we'll be able to come together with a, a SCIO plan for sustainable, environmental sustainability. And that already has been tagged to be part of the master plan once it gets approved. So, that's sort of the schedule there. The other thing that I had, I wanted to get some feedback on an idea. And I know we've had some, you know, both public, I think, there were, I got a, kind of some feedback from a coffee hour that folks had, that there's some concerns about, you know, what the, how the planning process doesn't seem to be very transparent. And it seems like the public ends up being very reactive rather than being proactive. And, um, you know, timing of when they hear about something, you know, isn't, it isn't really enough time to really digest all the information that's there and so forth. So, I was wondering, and this would fit in with our requirement to do some continuing education, if maybe, since, you know, everyone's new, the master plan is somewhat new, and maybe we dedicate a meeting where it's an open meeting, and we actually get, and, and do maybe two, a good two hours or two and a half hours on, you know, the planning process, you know, key aspects of, of, you know, what philosophies are behind the master plan, where development, you know, what levels of development are, are envisioned in different areas of the township, and just, you know, kind of do a whole recap of where the process is and planning and how people can become engaged in, you know, what the planning commission is doing. So, that would fulfill, you know, our continuing education. It would also probably support, you know, some folks who are interested in, in the planning process. Thoughts?
Would it be informational? Or would the public have a chance to provide requests for change? I mean, is this an opportunity for change or not? Is more informational or...
Well, yeah, I think technically it's, I mean, obviously, we can change ordinances. We have a zoning ordinance, and the ordinances are really the backbone of what gets enforced. So, it would be an opportunity to discuss. One of the things I think the ZOA is going to be looking at is more extensive, you know, environmental overlay and how we can integrate all the environmental considerations. So, that might be a really good thing to talk about if ZOA can have, you know, some thoughts there. So, I think it could be, I think we could, you know, incorporate an exchange, certainly a dialogue.
Public might really appreciate that.
Other folks? I mean, maybe it's a three-hour thing, I don't know. It could be, I mean, we did seven to 10, seven to 9:30's probably, if, if we're going to keep it. Any thoughts, other?
So, it'd be sort of like the, the coffee hour with the board? We would have our dinner hour?
I, I was thinking it would be probably, it would be an actual meeting. And we probably have either ask Carla Wartman or, you know, to, you know, provide some information, all right, and, and so forth. And then have, you know, have some key, just, I could see breaking it down into, you know, density, you know, environmental impact, you know, some key things that we can, you know, kind of, the strategies behind the master plan, and then how the, you know, the zoning ordinances then implement the, the master plan or so. You know, I'm, I'm just trying to think of a, a way that would be big picture, but also how, how planning decisions are made. What's the difference between, you know, a, 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 a plan that is, that we really don't have that much discretion with, and, and a PND, that kind of thing? I don't know. And then, I mean, Chris, you know, you could try, you know, provide some, some thoughts to, um, you know, process and so forth.
I think it would be a good idea because I, um, I've certainly learned a lot about how the planning system works. And I, I think it would be enlightening for our citizens to know how it works. So, so this, so it would be within our meeting, so we would set aside time for that in our meeting.
Yeah, I think it would be the bulk of the meeting. You know, we, we, we wouldn't want to have a, a, a project or unless it was a very, a simple, you know, like a sign or something like that. Not something that would be, yeah.
So, the average three-hour meeting, how much time do you envision for this activity?
Most of the meeting. I mean, we still, yeah. And so, it would be structured in a way that there'd be more, rather than just a strict three-minute type of comment, it would be more, we could set it up so that there would be more of an exchange.
Okay, yeah, no, that's a great idea. And I think, uh, we can complement the selling process of this by actually contacting our local schools and letting the government, the teacher, teachers, government, send your students. Because I took my son four or five years ago to Ann Arbor. I didn't know we had a planning commission here. I mean, somehow it didn't work out. We still live here, but somehow we didn't, never, never came here. So, I had to go all the way to Ann Arbor, and they had the meetings in a nice hall and everything else, City Hall. And so, this could be a good audience as well because a lot of kids, it's part of the project, like my son. But anyway, besides, no, that's a great idea. I mean, that's fantastic because...
I didn't even think about that because, I mean, it would, maybe we can recruit some new planners, right?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, these are the young kids who are part of the community. I mean, they may go away with colleges elsewhere, but regardless, they'll carry this knowledge. And for them, coming to this meeting is mandatory part of the curriculum. My son had to go for five meetings or whatever. And half the time, he was dazed and confused, but still, he learned something when he came from Ann Arbor.
So, one of the things would be to look at our schedule, Doug, and see if it looks like there might be, we can, if we can arrange a meeting.
A meeting like tonight?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd basically a meeting like tonight. And I'm thinking, you know, it may end up being in, you know, just to prepare for it, it may need to be in June, give the zoning. I think, you know, the ZOA would want to have, you know, some, some things to discuss too that, you know, like, you know, the tree preservation stuff, the environmental overlay, some of those things.
I think too, some of the stuff that you brought out to neighbors of the Arbor's Grove project, like, who's really, like, who's really responsible for the wetlands? And who gets the permit for this and that? I thought that was very useful for them to know.
Yeah.
But how will people get notice of that meeting? Just the regular channels?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things that we're, with the student engagement. I guess there used to be an HOA list, you know, on the website, and that's gone now. We're trying to see if there was any kind of email list for the SADS. You know, maybe, you know, Rajesh, you could ask if, if, but evidently, there really isn't a, a format at all for communication.
Perhaps we could send something to the...
The Sun Times?
The Sun Times with something to like, how, home association?
That's what she said, the HOAs.
Oh, I didn't know what that's for, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're trying to get, we're trying to get a, a assemble, you know, a reassemble of, at least a, a way of contacting people other than the banner on the, on the website, you know.
And then the board of trustees, they have a constituency that if they knew what days that was set aside for, they could pass it around too.
I was just going to say, I mean, the banner on the website is one idea, but also, if we can set the date in advance, we could get it into the June newsletter. And what, what the township has found is that the newsletter actually is our, probably our single most effective way of reaching people because it does get mailed to every household.
So, that would be, it would be a July distribution. So, then we're talking August.
Right, or, or early July, I mean, or later July.
Late July, early August.
I mean, so that is putting it out there a ways. But if we really want to make sure that we get a lot of, I mean, that we have plenty of time to get people to have notice, that would be one way. I'm not, I'm not arguing for that necessarily. I'm just saying that's a way to inform people.
Yeah, so we'll, we're going to, and maybe by that time, the students are also gathering some ways of, you know, reaching out to, to folks too. So, maybe we can piggyback on some of those. All right. All right. Board of Trustees?
Maybe, one, one quick point. I mean, maybe in the next few meetings, we should kind of set some time aside in the agenda to talk about the agenda for these meetings, these workshops, whatever you want to call them. And kind of identify high-level bullet points, sub-bullets maybe, as to what we want to tell, talk to the audience about. The planning commission, what it does, what it consists of.
And if what things that we want to, a brush up on too?
Yeah, well, I certainly want to.
For our, our, our agenda as well.
Yeah, no, exactly. I mean, yeah, some of the basics of planning inside township. And, uh, yeah, but if you can make it catchy and interesting, then that's, I think, our, one of our main goals is...
And we can record it so people, you know, who, we can always refer to it as well.
Right, right, right.
We, we encounter new folks. Okay, Board of Trustees?
So, as Mr. Wong said, Heritage Woods is on the VOT for tomorrow. VOT continues to work on staffing issues. And we did approve the OptiFlow site plan last meeting.
Okay. Zoning Board Appeal for Headland. We do not have, we're looking at someone for the DDA. World Commission Advisory Committee?
I'll be, I'll be there.
Land Preservation?
Land Preservation is, has its monthly meeting this Thursday at 3:00. We will be considering the Buy, Protect, Sell applicants for the RENS farm. We got a good range of applications, I think six or eight. So, we'll be making a recommendation to the board about that project. I think that's our main, I, I mean, we have other things on the agenda, but that's the main thing I can think of to highlight. You know, it's usually business as usual. The other thing is though, that the VOT will be considering tomorrow the LPC's millage renewal request. So, the millage is up for renewal, and it's going to fit VOT for approval.
The ZOA?
Have you proposed to increase it?
I believe that we have proposed a renew and restore. So, we're not proposing an increase, but just going back to what it was originally when it was first passed. So, you know, the Headley Amendment means that every year there's a small decrease in the millage, and we're just trying to go back to the original millage amount, which I believe was at just a full 0.5.
Who wants to report out on the ZOA, the priorities?
I think Doug Wong did a pretty good job of describing that we did meet recently. It, it sounds like probably once a month, we're going to get together. We are going to target the PUD ordinance revisions since that's already looks like it's, it's been worked on. So, it may be coming next. And then we'll, if I got it right, we were going to package a lot of the ordinance amendments and group them together and take them to a planning commission meeting in the future. So, we want to do them one at a time, and hopefully, we'll get quite a few in at one time.
And, and for people's, our general public, there's a, every time the zoning ordinance gets amended, there's a public hearing. So, there's the general that was given, and, and then there's a public hearing on those ordinance amendments for, and I think, suppose the PUD is a separate one, and then maybe a few of them that are, might be related or smaller could be grouped together. That's the thing behind that. Okay, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec. Biggest thing that we've been discussing, well, one of the big things we've been discussing is a Parks Manager, which is part of the millage rule that we have. And we do need to get it approved by the Board of Trustees, of course, but this, this manager would assist with coordinating maintenance of the parks, making sure that the trails were groomed, coordinating all the efforts for signage. So, it's a pretty important job for that. We're also looking at getting access to one of the preserves. That's the Van Curler Preserve that's got a focus this year on, on our part. And one other thing that might be important to note is that there's a... And one other thing that might be important to note is that there's, we're doing an inventory, or one of the interns is keeping track of the heron rookery, to see if the herons are returning, what are the numbers, whether they're moving to other locations, you know, so is it, is it influx, or is it pretty stable? We need to get a good idea on that. We don't want to interfere with that by, you know, the developments, and now we have seen the developers being cooperative and watching out for that, and is it going to pay off? We can try to get feedback to this group and the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Cap.
We do have a meeting coming up this Wednesday at four o'clock. Maybe the two big ones on the agenda are the SIO Ridge Upland, that's the proposed sidewalks out in that area, and I believe they're proposing to take action on a contract for at least the engineering, and then also have a presentation from the ATA for long-range planning.
Do you guys record by any chance?
I believe we do, yes. The public is invited. They're all right here at Township Hall also.
Because I'd be really interested in the presentation on the ATA, just because I haven't done my homework on that. So four o'clock.
This Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay. Okay. Then, Huron River Watershed Council.
Okay. One of the biggest things that I heard in our last board meeting was, for the Huron River Watershed Council, was that they have policies that they have, that they keep in mind, I don't really know how to put it yet because I haven't seen them, that affect river quality, and that, of course, is something that's important to us. We have two creeks that are part of the watershed, and I, they've promised to send out copies of the ordinances that they would like, that they look for, and I don't know how they compare to what we already have in place, a good thing to take a look at. It could be that we have good coverage, I don't know, and I, we have setback policies, and that's all important. But have we done enough? And so we can take a look at that. I get the idea from some of the discussion that took place, that there are areas of the Huron River watershed that are not participating as fully as some like SIO and Ann Arbor are doing. So it may be, those are the outliers, and we're not, but it's good, it'd be good to find out.
So the process would be, once you get those policies, maybe we can have Carla Wartman or OHM, whoever, whatever, whoever makes sense, just review those policies and confirm that were at least as good, if not better than what they're recommending.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Anyone else? Then we'll go to Minutes.
Again, I'll say I really like this format.
I defined one thing on, it was page, it's page seven of the Minutes and page eight in the packet. And, let me see, and it talked about, let's see, it was the third to the last paragraph, where it said, connection back to the development from the public pathway, especially in winter. I don't know if I misspoke or whatever, but the intent of that was that, especially during nesting season, because the pathway, we won't want to be disturbing the herons during nesting season, and if the pathway dead-ends, a person would have to walk all the way back, you know, and plus it might be also just convenient to be able to do a circle, you know, within the development for even the people that live there. So that was what that was. And we had decided nesting season was the February to the August dates, that February 15th to, and I think we extended it to August 15th.
Yes, you did make it in here. Where was that?
I think you, I think that was in the motion.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, but it was, yeah. And it's okay, because it was, it says July 15th with Mr. Stolman, because that's what we're talking about, but then he asked us to do the August, to the August.
It's point number four in the motion on page nine of, sorry, 10 of the Minutes, 11 of the packet.
So I would like to correct that to say, especially during February 15th to August 15th, parentheses, the nesting season.
And that would be on page what?
That's on page seven.
Seven. You wanted to say what?
The third paragraph on the bottom.
You wanted to say especially when?
Ah, yes.
During February 15th to August 15th, in parentheses, nesting season.
It said page seven, right?
Yeah, it's page seven of the Minutes, page eight of the packet.
Let's see where you want it. Sounds appropriate.
I realize some people are continuing to take over.
These are the most detailed minutes I've ever...
Please congratulate Chris there.
Did we officially...
I'm sorry.
On page 10 of the Minutes, 11 of the packet, Mr. Hyde, I think you did such a great job of itemizing everything. What I still didn't see in here, and we had discussed, and Mr. Stolman had agreed to, is altering the landscaping plan to remove a couple of invasive species. However, I don't have my notes here, and I didn't get a transitorial, whether we'd actually concluded that in the motion, or whether that was an informal discussion and agreement.
You had gotten an agreement from them. He said that would be no problem. If you sent him the list, he would be glad to incorporate it.
Right, okay, so we didn't actually have that in the motion.
I don't remember us putting it in, but you did, you did get an agreement.
I did, and I have followed up and sent an email about those species.
So won't be any surprise to them if the Board of Trustees would insist upon it if you don't get that.
Okay. Good point.
And that's also something that we can work on with our ZOA too, to make sure that we have a, promote the native and our adaptive species.
I mean, you know, there are things like daylilies, that they're not native, but they're not terrible. They'll persist forever, but they don't usually spread, whereas something, one of the species that he suggested, Eonimus fortuniae, has become a huge problem in Iberwhite in Ann Arbor, and it's really inundating the natural area, and given the proximity of this project to our preserves, that's why I feel particularly strongly, but it doesn't have to be native, but it really shouldn't be invasive.
Invasive, I mean, you could, yeah, and that might be an easier thing to add, it's just a, a list of invasives that...
Right.
What's the name of that one again? The invasive species that you were just mentioning?
The Latin name is Eonimus fortuniae, and I am sorry, it's, I don't remember the common name. There's like, there's so many different common names for given Latin name, that the Latin is usually easier because it's more standard. So it's some kind of Latu probably, but I don't, because others in the genus are called Latu, but I don't remember which one.
Okay, so any other items in the Minutes? Then a motion?
Move to approve.
As amended?
As amended.
Commissioner Hyde, is there support?
Support?
Support. Commissioner Moore, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, so the Minutes are approved as amended. Are there anything else that needs to come before the Planning Commission this evening?
I just, I wanted to go back to ask Commissioner Hyde a question, his report on the parks. Did you say that the Parks Manager would be paid, is supposed to be paid out of the millage?
Yes.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Is there, is there support? Okay, move by Commissioner Hyde, support, or Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 7:46.
Oh my gosh.